Commissioner Marshall. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Penobscot County Commission meeting of January 7th, 2025. A happy new year to everyone. Appreciate those who've joined us here today. First order will be call the roll. Commissioner Marshall.
Present.
Commissioner Tremble.
Present.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer.
Present.
And the Chair is here. At this point, I will ask Director Lavoy if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, do you want to conduct the elections?
I can, Chair. So Item B is the election of the Commission Chair, and we'll open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Chairman Commissioner Cushing.
Okay.
Second nomination.
Any further nominations? All nominations cease, and a vote for Commissioner Cushing to be Chair.
Are they ready to vote?
Yes, sir. Yeah, unless there's any objection, we're okay.
Okay. Thank you all.
Chair, it's your baby now.
Appreciate that.
Next item of business would be, I believe, oh, well, next item of business when I put my glasses on.
There you go.
Would be recognition of our newly elected Commissioner. You are here to carry on a very longstanding and proud tradition. As a former county official, I know you know the ropes, but we look forward to your guidance as we move forward with some of these things. So, welcome to the Commission.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
All right. That's your speech?
That's it. Ready to go.
And at this point, we have another new election. Our new Register of Probate, Hillary, would you like to come forward and share any comments?
I don't have a speech. I can't.
What?
I don't have a speech, right?
Generally, there's been a history of probate bringing, you know, baked goods to the Commission or something.
Well, I didn't get that. Is this...
Yes.
Yep, press the button. Yep, there you go.
I didn't get that memo.
A little closer.
Next time, I will make sure I bring baked goods. I just want to thank all of the residents of Penobscot County for voting for me and having faith in my ability to come into the probate office and just have it run like a well-oiled machine. We have a great, there's a great group of workers there that are ready to get their hands dirty and get things going, and we're just gonna give it our all and make the citizens of Penobscot County proud of us.
Great. Well, thank you, and I think you have a good partner in Judge Brandon Meyer. He's been wonderful for us to work with. Did you have something else, Mr. Administrator?
I do, because I guess I omitted from the agenda. We would, I believe that, sorry.
No, no, the office.
No, I believe that's already...
I think the swearing-ins have already, are you, you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. This morning, this morning, though, we need, I think the Register would like to bring forth a recommendation for a new deputy probate register.
Yes, so I would like to recommend and appoint Jen Sullivan as the Deputy Registrar for our probate office.
Great. Welcome, Jen. Thank you for your service. I know you've been with us for a while. Do you have any comments you'd like to share?
I'm just so excited to be working with Hillary, and we have, we're going places. I'm excited.
Terrific. Well, thank you. We look forward to good reports, and I know there's some challenging things in the probate world these days, but we stand ready to do what we can to assist.
Yes.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, if I could have a motion and a vote for official approval?
Is that an appointment, or do we have, okay, so we would...
I think you're supposed to bless it, yeah.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the Registrar's recommendation for deputy.
I would so move second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
All right, thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good now. Thank you.
At this point, we would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 30th, 2024, meeting.
I move approve the minutes of December 30th.
Have a motion?
Second with a question. Should I abstain from the vote?
Yes, please.
No, I haven't been part of that meeting.
That certainly...
Yeah, can second the motion without abstaining.
Yep, okay. So at this point, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right.
In unanimous of those present with one abstention?
Yep.
At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to share a public comment on anything not on our agenda?
I believe we have a Mr. Donahue that would like to speak for a moment.
Yeah, if you'd like to come forward, please join us here. Thank you very much. Good morning and happy new year.
Happy new year.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Commissioner Tremble.
If you would both introduce yourselves, and I think your microphone's not on yet, but there we go.
Elaine Thomas. I'm the Senior Manager of Community Impact at Heart of Man United Way.
Could you pull that up?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, you're a little...
Just a little more soft spoken.
Yes.
I'm Matt Donahue. I'm the Vice President and Chief Impact Officer with Heart of Man United Way. Wanted to thank you for previously supporting our ARPA request. We know that things shifted a little bit and changed, and just wanted to provide just a really quick update and then also a quick ask of you folks. The update is that our project for a nonprofit hub here in Penobscot County is moving forward. We've been working with the Bangor City Council on this as well, and as we've done some property valuation, we're really, have been in the last few months, looking at a particular property that we're doing due diligence on, and the Bangor City Council similarly moved our funding from ARPA to ARPA interest earnings. And I know at the Commissioners' meeting in early December, there was interest in looking at the same to obligate those funds to a project that was moving forward a little bit faster with the opportunity to potentially use those interest earnings for this project. And as we've been working with our Advisory Committee, we're really looking at, the City Council did put that into a council order, so it's kind of, sort of, more formalized. And as we look at potentially acquiring a property in the coming months and doing some due diligence on that and needing some funding to do some environmental studies of that property, we were hoping that the Commissioners would also look at potentially putting that into a more formalized agreement so that it's something that we can hang our hat on and move forward with that particular property when it becomes live later this month.
Okay. So do we have a new application at this point?
So it's not necessarily, it's the same application. I'm not sure if that's what you would be looking for. I know it was a little bit unclear at the particular meeting when it was moved about switching it from, you know, kind of following the City Council's process where they moved it from ARPA to ARPA interest earnings with the same project, just moving it from kind of one bucket to another.
Okay. So it's, you have anything that you would add or have concerns with, Wendy?
I do, but we can talk about it later.
Okay, all right. At this point, we don't take actions in public comment, but certainly appreciate your interest in this, and I guess as we move forward, we'll take a look at it. We have not made any determinations on what we will do with the ARPA interest, but facing the fact that we have about a $3.4 million shortfall in jail funding over the past few years, we've got to assess where we stand
Sure.
in our fund balance before we can make any allocations. But it certainly is a worthwhile project. We appreciate the diligence, so give us a little time here to review things. Do you have any comments?
We just agreed to, I would hope we could put it on the agenda in the near future, because it sounds like as they move forward, they need to have a pretty clear idea of what the county's willing to do so that they can make a commitment on a final investment.
Sure.
So I don't think we need to wait until March, maybe in the next, you know, 30 days or so, make a decision.
Understood. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, thank you very much.
Appreciate your being here. We'll keep you posted as we move forward.
Thank you.
One other question. What was the amount that originally was obligated on the ARPA?
It was $350,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Other public comments from those who are present? Seeing none, anyone that we have online, Tony?
I see nobody online that's out.
Okay, at this point, we will close the public comment, and we will invite our UT Director and his capable assistant to come forward with their agenda items. This is our front page UT Director. Good morning. Yeah, very nice article.
Wow.
What is it?
Yeah, wow.
Front page of the V D N today.
Today?
Oh, yeah. Celebrity follows me wherever I go.
Channel 7 is looking for you, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay, Tina, I don't think your mic is on, if you can side it up just a little.
Short and sweet, don't have much for you today, other than, as you're aware, that when the Town of Drew Plantation deorganized a year and a half or so ago, we were, left a small quantity hut that they used as a fire station, town office, and we've been a year and a half, give or take, with the help of our Sheriff's Department, trying to get that vacated from some squatters. We now own the building. We've got an opportunity now, while it's vacant, to try and get it appraised, therefore we could sell it, and I'm looking for some advice there. Do we, do we want to put it at auction and just take what we get out of it by having an auction company come and just sell it, or do we want to put it on the market, have it appraised, and try to get a real estate agent to help us? I'm kind of...
Do we have any other items in that that would need to be disposed of?
There's a small amount of trash in it, and there is seven, I think, vehicles left outside that we need to have hauled off, so I thought if we could, there were junk vehicles, they're in our possession now.
Okay.
And I thought if we could get those cleaned up by spring and have something ready to sell by spring, when people can see it. There is no plum, there is no plumbing there, there's no well, no septic. There's an overhead door where they used to store the fire truck in there. The fire truck's been taken out, but the overhead door doesn't work, so we've pretty much got a building that has very little value. The reason I bring it to your attention now is because we finally got the squatters out there, but also we have two residents in town, different residents, that have been looking at, what are you guys gonna do with the building, and they'd be interested in buying it should we put it on the market.
Okay. Is it something we should advertise first, or...
Based, based on the description and details, I think we might spend more to figure out how much it's worth, and so I guess would offer it up for public bid.
Yeah.
And you could always, with the thought, you could reject any or all bids if you don't get a satisfactory return number and go from there, but that would be my suggestion.
Yeah. So just put a sign up there, a large enough sign, people can see it, that public bid, bid's due by such a date?
Yep, we could. We'd advertise it, of course.
And I would assume the Lincoln News is probably...
That's the key paper up there, yes.
Those vehicles, are they in commercial value, all those vehicles?
No, they're scrap vehicles.
Scrap, so they need to be towed away.
Somebody was trying to put an illegal scrapyard there, but we were able to get ahead of that, almost, so we've got a few to deal with.
Okay. I would sense that it would be logical to advertise it for sale by bid and set a date.
Yep, so we'll work on that in the next couple of months. We'll have something in front of you that will come up to the date when we can have a bid opening for that property.
You might want to make sure that those people are quiet about purchase, be aware of the availability.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. One of them's a next-door neighbor, and one of them's the old clerk that used to work the town, so.
And it would, I would assume it would be the land and building, not just the building?
It's the land and building. It's way less than an acre, and it's a small quantity hut.
Okay. Is there another land that the town owns?
There is other land that the town owns. We're gonna deal with in the future.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Just an addition of the newspaper, maybe we could post a sign on the property that's gonna be sold.
I think we should, because not everybody's gonna read
Right.
Right.
The paper, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe we have a place on our website where we post those things as well.
Yep, yes.
Great.
We could put it on both your site and the UT website.
Yep.
Yep. All right, just looking for some guidance. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Inside that building was a fire truck. It's an antique in near-mint condition. We've got it running now. We towed it out and got it to a workshop, and they did very little work to it, and now we've got a 1980 Chevy, small, gas-offered truck with a thousand-gallon tank on the back and a portable pump. We didn't get the pump working. We worked on just getting the truck ready, but in the past, we've taken old equipment like that, or equipment that we've owned like that, and we've taken it to Central Main Auction and got the best we can get out of it. I didn't know if that's something you wanted to do with this antique truck from 1980. I mean, we got 3,800 miles on it. I didn't know if you want it on your front lawn. I wouldn't show what we're gonna do.
I don't think we've got a lot of space here. I just don't think you should refer to 1980s antique.
Thank you. Thank you. I objected myself.
Other than, that makes sense, but other than that, I don't know if the Cole Museum would have interest in that, if they purchase anything, if they just take donations, or what the, what do you think the value, auction value is of that?
You know, where it's at right now would be $4,000 to $6,000. I don't think it'd be a big deal, not really. If you want me to ask Cole M. Museum, I could take some pictures over.
I suspect they just take donations or go out to set it as an auction item.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would see.
No known, no known wants or uses up in that area?
The Town of Reed was interested in looking at it once we got it running, but they've since lost interest, and they do our fire support up there in Drew. And there was one guy from Lewiston who's called me a couple times who's interested in it, so whatever we do with it, I'll let him know
Okay.
where it's gonna be.
I think the general consensus is to dispose of it in the most efficient manner possible. The auction is that, so...
That gives, if we get it to the auction hall soon enough, they can advertise it sooner, and therefore anybody who's interested in that sort of equipment would find it.
Okay, and did you want to go up and drive it down, or?
I'm good with that. I don't have a CD out.
You don't need one for this, Dan.
I don't need it.
Okay.
Just a quick update, broadband. You'll remember that we got a $300,000, we spent $300,000, got a $3 million broadband grant for eight of our townships, and we found out just recently that they've started construction on that as of January 3rd, so they're starting to build the fiber optic line to those facilities, all of them close enough to Lincoln right now, and then they'll get over and do the other ones in the Millinocket area, but, so they've started that process, I just want to let you know.
Good. So we have a contract with someone to do the broadband?
City and Fiber Consolidated. Yeah, we have, we have that grant we got through the main connectivity authority to build that fiber optic lines.
Great.
We're excited to get that out to them.
True.
The only other thing is, last minute, I'm wondering, East Millinocket, just as you know, we've been waiting for, to hear from, back from East Millinocket what the price might be for a new contract with them, and we met with them some two or three weeks ago. They haven't had a select board meeting since we met with them, so there's no official work been done. I spoke with the chief yesterday, and the select board is meeting today, hoping this will be part on the agenda. Don't know if we'll get a solution yet, but we don't, that there will be an increase in price and that they will continue to service our needs, and we're just waiting for a letter supporting that. The letter they sent us telling us that our services were canceled, we'd like to have a letter in return saying that they're willing to continue our contract till July 1, when we can form a new contract.
East Millinocket has provided endowments and fire services to some of the unorganized territory, and they, after negotiating the last contract, sent us a notice saying they were going to cancel that, created a new confirmation.
Yeah, I was at the meetings earlier. Okay, thanks.
George, we were supposed to get a letter from them rescinding the previous letter.
We're hoping to receive that after they meet today. I don't know that we will, but the chief said he hoped to make that happen as soon as possible.
Were you thinking of going over, Commissioner Marshall?
Pardon?
Were you thinking of going to that meeting?
Well, if it's today or tomorrow?
He said it was today.
I'll be going down to Augusta premier or something.
I can, I can send, unless there are any objections, I can send an email to Denise, to the Town Administrator, Town Manager, and at least have something in email form. I mean, if they don't, she may indicate they have to talk about it tonight, but...
Because we're coming up on the 60th day, if I'm not mistaken.
We have something in writing that at least indicates that the intent is to move forward with a new contract and not lose service, so.
Yeah.
Sound good?
If they don't officially take action today, it would be nice to have an email that says they will continue until a decision is.
Just an email would be a help, yeah.
Better than nothing. Yep, good.
Okay, we haven't forgot that we're trying to put together some sort of a meeting up there with Mr. Froman, Paul Froman, try to get a meeting together with Millinocket, East Millinocket, and we're still trying to work forward to try to set that meeting, but I thought, and after talking to the Administrator, I think we better get the East Millinocket contract resolved before we move forward with anything else.
I've talked to two of the Town Councils in Millinocket, who we will be coordinating with on a meeting sometime in January, once we've got this put to bed.
Okay.
And we know that the agreement's been made, it's just kind of formalizing it now so that we know that this contract will go forward, and we'll adjust any payment accordingly, as we would anyway, under any condition each year. And what is this, it's for one year, George?
The current contract we have is one year and ends at the end of June, and the new contract we're talking about should start July 1.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, appreciate it. Next up will be EMA, Deputy Director Fox. As folks may know, our former Director Bradley Nudine accepted another position, submitted his resignation. We appreciated what he has done for the county over the time he was here in both the Deputy and the Director's position, and we wish him well in his new role. Thank you for joining us. Happy new year.
Happy new year. Thank you so much.
So that's one of the great things that, you know, Bradley, thank you. One of the great things that Bradley, you know, developed in the office is a Deputy, and this morning, what the recommendation is, is to vote Deputy Director Fox as interim Director for this, at this time, and we will talk about how we make steps forward on the agenda in a little bit.
Okay, so at this point, I have a suggestion that we appoint an interim Director. We have a motion.
I so move.
Second? And a motion is second to appoint Chris Fox as our interim Director for EMA. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right, thank you.
We didn't ask you if you wanted to accept that position, and I assume that you...
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here, your willingness to help.
Thank you, sir. Yep.
At this point, we'll invite Mr. McDonald forward for a facilities update. A happy new year to you, sir.
You as well.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What good news do we have?
Well, we're finished with the asbestos down on Franklin Street, and I actually thought about saying I saved a lot of money on my car insurance, but I reached out several times to Joshua Tunic, who we're working with on this, and he hasn't responded, about the availability of the first set of drawings. I expect them probably in a week or two, and moving forward, there is still a little bit of demo to do down in there, but it's probably not worth bringing someone in to just do that. I figured we would include that in the package to whoever looks at doing the work. There are a couple of block walls down there that we're gonna take out, and there'll be some demo to install an ADA ramp in the middle of the space. But right now, we're just in a bit of a holding pattern. Over the holidays, he was occupied with family and things, so it's been a quiet couple of weeks.
Okay.
But we're ready to get started, and once we have that first set of drawings, and we'll run them by the sheriff and his staff, and once we get that where it's pretty complete, we'll be ready to go out for bid.
Okay, great. We are cautiously optimistic that there will be parties pounding on the door to bid.
Well, there was, there was interest the first time, but probably not enough to get a good price, so we, and I think it was wise, the way we handled it and backed off and started over.
Yeah.
We learned a lot about the building that we didn't know by getting that space, so...
Okay. It's an antique building, I understand.
I've got nothing. I can't think of anything.
Part of our...
Yeah, yeah, probably better off, don't encourage, yeah.
Okay.
Elevator this morning. See, it looks like it's working, but...
Yeah, I don't know if they showed up or not. I got a call last night, so we've been having some hokey issues with the elevator.
This elevator or...
Yeah, this one here. And long story short, basically, you press the button to get in. When you get to where you're going, it only opens a little bit, and then a light will go off. Hit the button again, it opens right up. It's happened several times in the past couple of years, few years. The service company was here yesterday and said they needed a part, and they'll be back tomorrow. Well, then I got a call last night that it just stopped, the doors stopped opening altogether. So I called them back, and they were supposed to be here this morning. We tagged the elevator out last night, but all those tags are gone.
I see that.
So I don't know if someone just got on it last night and it worked, or they were worked on it. I didn't see anybody, hear from anybody.
Good.
So...
Can you reach out to them?
Yeah.
So this must be Disen Croft? Disen Croft? No, whoever it is.
TK.
Yeah, TK, yeah.
Disen Croft, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, it was either a door position switch or the door motor itself needed to be replaced. He was unsure.
Okay, yeah.
And just, the sheriff may be interested, but we finally found an appliance repair company willing to show up, and they're here right now working on the number-two dryer that continues to
Good.
fail.
Good, good.
I assume that's close to antique as well?
Actually, they were replaced since I've been here, so they are not five years old yet.
Okay.
And we, there was an issue with the number-two dryer, several, this is, I don't know the exact number, but multiple motors, I think five or six motors have been put in it, and it's past warranty, so now it's on us, but...
Perfect.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we get any more good news. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
HR update. Good morning, and happy new year again.
You also. On your agenda is a new policy approval for the paid family medical leave. It's the only policy that needs to be revised for the start of this year. I've pretty much taken the FAQs off the state website to make this a very bland policy in the event that rules change or are modified as we go along. In short, it references what the program is, and to refer to state rules for more information. So I'm asking for approval on that policy today.
Any questions?
And we're gonna, we're gonna absolve the cost the first year or six months?
First year.
And then, and then we'll split following...
Yes.
And I have not put those figures in the policy, in the event that we change our minds later on.
So this is just for the policy approval?
Right. And it's based on rules.
Is there a tremble?
I have no question. So, how do you put this in their file? Because each employee has to sign us, do you annually, when they have the review, they sign it?
For this one, we're gonna get this out to every employee, but generally, as when you did your onboarding, we'll have them in there in the prior packets, yep.
I would move in, that we improve this policy.
And we have a motion to approve the proposed policy.
Second.
Second, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right.
Is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item is EMA director interviews. On your EMA tab in your folder, you'll see the internal job posting that we put out. We have not published the director position externally. We do have a few internal applicants, and so, at this time, Administrator Atkins and I would like to see if there's a commissioner interested in helping us conduct interviews and start scheduling those.
I've indicated my interest in that.
Okay.
Consensus of the commission for Commissioner Marshall, okay?
Okay.
Yep. Now, we have, we have one other applicant in-house, and so, my suggestion would be is that we interview both, and then move from there.
Okay.
Is that, originally, we had talked about just interviewing...
That's historically been our...
The former director, the former deputy director alone, but I think in this case, where we have a, another in-house, that we offer the same opportunity, yeah, yeah. Good.
Seeing no objection?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
I'm good, thank you.
You know, Sheriff, it's been since last year that we've seen you, so we're delighted to have you with us. Happy New Year.
Let's start off a good year.
Took him a half hour to use that one.
Happy New Year all. Welcome aboard, Commissioner, good to see you.
Oops, sorry.
I'm gonna go down through that list of things that I sent over the other day. I do have a couple additional things, just real quick, where we haven't been together for a while. Staffing in the jail, we have five current open positions, and there are several in various positions, some are in training now. We have had a pretty good turnout of people applying over the last couple times, which has been nice. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure what's actually driving that. The wage adjustments were done some time ago, so I don't think it was just...
I've heard a lot of positive comments about the new vest.
Not for the jail, but patrol. We did fill a couple key positions that sometimes I worry are a little more difficult to fill within the jail, and that's a court position, and then our intake position. So, we were able to fill both of those, which is been great, and worked out really, really well. Intake is critically important to us, as you know, we divided intake from its old role of being right involved in booking, and kind of separating that as a specialty. The data requests from our jail operations, our correctional operations today is huge, and making sure that we have consistency in who's doing that data collection is very important. We're getting tested right now, because it's end of year, beginning of year, and we're being asked for a lot of data. I am so pleased at how our intake team has developed over the last couple of years. The data's there, it's easy to grab, they know what we're looking for, so we can turn over data pretty quickly, so kudos to them for what's taking place there. We've done some audits, the command staff from the jail did some audits on bookings, and we're very critical of the bookings. If you're missing one signature, or one, this wasn't done, through the, all the processes as you can imagine for booking in, somebody into the jail. In the last couple audits that we did, by randomly pulling a bunch of bookings, we were in the high ninety percents of completeness for every single document, signature, sign-off in every one of them. That is fabulous, when you're looking at, in the correctional world of doing admissions into a jail. So, I think a big part of it is taking that essential function, moving it over to the little room that we had for it, and moving it out of the busy, busy area of what I have always called our emergency room. So that was a good move that we did a couple of years ago, and we're seeing the benefit of that today.
When you say you're ninety percent on the booking paperwork, if you're missing something in the bookings, that just affect the jail? That doesn't affect them when they go to trial or anything?
Nothing to do with that.
It's just about the internal of the jail.
Yeah, and so, we're hard on ourselves, so, I mean, it could be as simple as somebody didn't sign off on one form, inmate or an officer, nothing to do with the court systems at all. This is small things, and so, I'm pleased, because we're being much more critical than a lot of jails would be, because we want it to be every duck in a row. And, like I said, it's, it's really good. If you have a person come in a very bad condition, whether they're intoxicated, under the influence, perhaps violent, medical, medical problems, they not, they may not be in a position at that moment to complete an entire booking process, right? And you have to come back and work on that, sometimes it takes days.
Is this something that Palos County uses, or does DOC look at this as well?
This is, this is really our own system, and we've, because it's worked so well, we've been able to add to it, and really, the reason we do it is for the data. We've added questionnaires into our homeless population, because we're always asked that question, how many of the individuals are coming into the jail that might be homeless? That's always tracked everywhere. We track information like that, we track those who have been treated or diagnosed with a mental illness, or substance use disorder, or along the lines, many of these things, our prior questioning. The ratings that we received on our prior audit were fantastic, and again, we owe it to the staff, we owe it that we've moved that out of trying to do that in the middle, you folks know where it was, and I know you toured many times in your past job with us. Having that right in the middle of the booking area was a terrible, a terrible plan, it's just not a good layout, as the physical plant. But it's not only the physical plant, but it's the, it's the staff that have done that, and they've done a tremendous job, and it's very helpful when people really want data. I see where we are, and this is not to, you know, compare us to the state or other counties, but I see where we are when folks are asking us about data, and whether it's for funding or for the ability to provide treatment or programming, we're grabbing that data at our fingertips, and it's, it's helpful. So you're not just guessing who's coming in and out of the facility, what condition they're in, what are their needs.
Sheriff, these new data requirements, I'm assuming they're DOC, state mandated?
Some are, and some are because we're listening to what people are asking, so...
We're seeing a financial, is this gonna incur a financial burden, additional financial burden on the county's department?
There are a couple that are not related directly to data, that are standards that MDOC, the main Department of Corrections, has put in place, that are going to come with a fiscal note. That's very concerning to us. What I was really frustrated to see, there were some standards, or some thoughts, that were brought to the corrections world, that went into legislation and failed. Meaning, both parties looked at this and said, not appropriate for corrections, not needed or not appropriate, and they never passed as, as law. The main Department of Corrections turned around, made it a standard, and said, we'll do it as a standard. And I think that's a terrible thing, you have one person, one individual, making decisions on how correctional operations can run, rather than the voice of our legislators, or those that were on our committee. We just saw that reference to the new twelve or thirteen standards that they brought forward, that we adamantly opposed. The county's professional standards commission that was built up of county and state employees made tremendous recommendations, commissioners were involved in that committee, made tremendous recommendations, didn't say no to them all. As a matter of fact, we embraced some of these standards and changes. And then, when they were presented to the main Department of Corrections Commissioner, he ignored them all, and put in his own rules. And we were stunned, I think everybody was stunned. So, it's, it's a little concerning that there's that much power in the main Department of Corrections to control county jail standards.
You know, it's, again, it's a problem of administrative mandation instead of legislative, and with that, is, is an accompanying cost that is shifted onto the taxpayers.
Yes, so...
The county tax. Yeah, county taxpayer.
We see that particularly when it came to the medical treatment. We're watching individuals being brought into the county jails that are in very bad condition, and some of it is due to substance use, and so, there's untreated medical and untreated mental health issues, until sometimes they're brought through the door for the first time. We're seeing open wounds that are just absolutely amazing. If you saw, or you heard me speak several months ago, we had the emergency room doctors from both Northern Light and St. Joe who came over and toured our facility, which was great, so they could see firsthand the challenges that we have in this building, and how can we work better together with the hospitals. We talked about wound care and things. So, one of the issues that the Department of Corrections has put forward was that a county jail, this is written in the same exact back-to-back sentences, which is just shocking. So, in one sentence says, "Under no circumstances can a county jail exceed its state-rated capacity." So you can never go over. The very next sentence says, "Under no circumstances can a county jail refuse an inmate." Well, how does that make sense? We're not supposed to go over, but we can't refuse. And then it goes to, unless you have a medical situation that falls under E2 standard, which is extremely broad. And what we're finding is, when you have somebody who's under the influence, and they've not wanted care at the hospital, they will deny treatment at the hospital. That's common, I'm gonna go in, I don't want any treatment. Then they come into the jail, and we are forced to provide that care. And so, a police department's walking away, and now we're forced to go over and pay the bill, and take care of the person in the hospital, when that really should have been done before they go in there. You know, a primary rule about our law enforcement is not only only affecting an arrest, but making sure that the person is medically stable before we incarcerate them. And so, you know, to be quite frank, most of our agencies around us do a tremendous job of this, we've been doing this for years. But it's a shame that a standard had to come in place to do that. I think you're handcuffing the great relationships that a lot of counties have with their local partners. I don't have a tremendous problem here, knock on wood, we have good relationships with our local police departments, they know if somebody should go to the hospital. But once in a while, there, there are situations that we're being brought, people that, while I understand the charges, and they should be arrested for a charge, held accountable, they need medical treatment. And so, the minute they're brought through the door, now we're...
Strictly question on this.
Sure.
And you probably have more input on this on you, but on the standards, the way you described it, the commissioner pretty much has full authority on what the standards are gonna be.
Yeah.
I mean, on a lot of things that come out of Augusta, this rulemaking process, if it's not specific in legislation, and this very strict guideline on rulemaking, I mean, seems like these standards should be, have the same standards as rulemaking, as how they get enacted to me.
I would agree, I understand that there's, there's minor substitutes and major substitutes, and major substitutes have to come back to the committee for review and approval, and it sounds as if the standard bypassed that process of legislative oversight.
Well, that's what we've argued, so, the commissioner of the Department of Corrections said these are minor, and they're absolutely not minor. There are substantial costs, substantial operational changes, when it's forcing us to take people that have medical conditions, or medical needs, and care, that is absolutely a major substantive change to a rulemaking process. We testified in those hearings, I provided written testimony on our behalf. It, it's just, it's just shocking that that one position has that much power to change it. And mind you, some of these changes throughout time were, were shot down in legislation by both parties.
Would, is the Sheriff's Association considering any legislative action to try and bring this forward?
Yes.
Okay. I'd certainly like to be kept apprised of that, so we can weigh in if appropriate.
Right. On the law enforcement thing, sorry to take so long on that, that's very important. On the law enforcement side of stuff, I'm concerned, I spoke to our county manager the other day, and there had only been a couple of times in my history, being sheriff or the chief deputy, that I was worried about the staffing levels of patrol. It's generally been the jail, and the jail is somewhat stable. We're struggling in patrol. So I have two open positions currently in our rural patrol areas, and then three open positions in our contract towns, and then I have one military whole-year leave, person just left for a whole year again. We are, we are struggling, and so, in order to cover the areas that we have for responsibilities, we've adjusted, like a lot of people, we've had to say no to a lot of details, things that we've done in the past. I hear some of the pushback from the community, saying these are important to us. That's what community police is all about, but something that we've been proud of for years. It is really putting us in a difficult situation to have to say no to some of these towns. I wish I had the answer. Scott and I, Scott was gracious, and allowed me to vent probably way too long the other day about trying to figure out how we could do this. It's not just money. I wish you could just come over here and ask, and say that we need to pay our guys more money, while that always helps, that's not the only answer. So, we're creatively working, we can talk about it on another day, but I do wanna put this on your plate, that I am concerned that we're in a need for, for some hiring. We do have a couple folks in the process, which are good. I did, I met with the town of Grebush the other day, this is nice that some of these towns that we have contracts with have taken up the thought processes of helping us do buyouts, or helping us fund an individual while they're away at the academy. One of the things, because we hadn't sent folks to the academy for so long, we're learning is, there's really a tremendous cost behind sending folks to the academy. I understand why the buyouts is a high one. It's really expensive, not only the, the four and a half months that they're gone, but tuition costs, ammunition costs, uniform costs while they're there, equipment costs. There's a, it's a lot of money to invest in an individual, and I see what these municipalities have been going through for some time.
Is it three years, I'm sorry, is it three years with the buyout, that's how it affects?
Five years, yes. The top one is around fifty thousand dollars, and then it goes down. We haven't bought somebody in that, that range. A lot of times, the officers that have come to us, maybe two or three years, or three and a half years, it's helpful, because we can immediately put them on the road. We're a little different than some of our municipal partners, that can put somebody with another officer for months. It's hard for us, because we have zones that have to be covered, it's one deputy, one zone, and so, it's hard to kind of get them in, in partnership. So, the interesting thing is, you folks helped us with that thought process of trying to bring on part-time, not to just fill those shifts, but to build up, I know this is the wrong terminology, but I'm a sports guy, so we're trying to build up our farm team system through the part-timers, they can ride with other officers. A couple things that are good by that, my officer on the road has some backup riding with him. And we're actually employing these individuals, so that when a full-time position comes available, we have a pool to kind of look at immediately, will we lose some of them to some other smaller town police departments? Absolutely. I was talking with Chief Leonard the other day about this, and I said, this is actually not a bad thing for the other towns around us, because somebody, if we don't have a spot, and that we're training them up part-time, and they go away, it's okay, that's still a benefit to some of these other little towns, and we know there's a loss, but I think it's good for us, and it'll be good for some of those agencies. My problem is, it's going to take us a couple of years to get this, so that it works really well, well. We are excited that we are, Body Cam Evidence Technician is on, just starting this week. He's very much more optimistic than I was about when we're gonna be able to turn this entire program on. As you know, you folks helped us a lot, supported the program, got us the equipment, but it was really about having this technician speak about data. There is a lot of work in this, more than, than we know.
And this is somebody who had experience in this field.
That's correct, yeah. And so, I was thinking six months, he's thinking three. So, it just shows you that you have somebody that understands the system, understands where we are. We were taking every step that we could to be prepared, so I'm, I'm very cautious, I mean, optimistic about being able to get this turned on.
Having done some initial research on the use of, you know, technology or AI, if there is a program that he finds would be helpful in expediting some of the more pedestrian things that he has to do, I think bringing that forward to us would certainly warrant some considerations.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned, I've watched some of the presentations on AI reporting, it's not ready.
No, I'm not talking as much as reporting as, I know, looking at, you know, blurring out faces.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
How plates, those type of things.
Yeah, that stuff's been in place for a while, and that will certainly help us. In, in our programs, we already have paid for some of that. We've already bought some of the software that was at, we had IT involved with buying stuff, so we could be well prepared. We were taking advice from people that knew what they were doing when we were purchasing it.
Yeah.
So, yeah. As far, there is software coming about helping with reporting. I've watched a couple demonstrations, I've read some, some articles, we're not ready for that. It's not, it does not, it doesn't write like you'd want it to. So, we'll get there, I think, it's just like all technology, we'll get there. Just taking way too much time, but legislative culture is the tent, I think you all know. We've put three bills in, you know, we've been incredibly successful out of our office, providing stuff that impacts those who live, work, and raise families here in Bon Scott County. I put three bills in, I have Representative O'Halloran from Brewer, and Representative McIntyre from Burlington area, both of them, great people, great to work with, I love having local folks sponsoring bills for us, and co-sponsoring them. One is on prison contraband in jails, it was a, there needs to be a modification to statute that talks about electronics, vague pens, and cell phones, and things like that. None of this falls into this. This isn't just about the incarcerated individuals, this could be staff that have done things wrong. And there are cases in our state where staff, vendors, may have brought stuff into a facility, and you can't even charge them with a crime, because it never hit the definitions. When this was brought up in the past, there was some pushback, saying, you know, you're trying to get incarcerated people and charge them with more crimes. It isn't just about the incarcerated people, it's about the dangers that are put in, whether it was a staff person, a vendor, or outside person that may come into a facility, so we have that one. The one that I have brought forward, Representative Costin brought it for me, unfortunately, during the writers' process there, we got missed in the subsection. Unfortunately, during the writers' process there, we got missed in the subsection. This allows for pre-trial inmates to earn additional time if they're in our work program. So as you know, our work programs are, whether it's washing the floors or working in the kitchen or in the laundry, were always done by sentenced individuals and they would earn time off their sentence. We used to have the work groups outside. That population has really gone out of the jails and are in our jails anymore. But there are still individuals in there that could do internal stuff, washing floors and laundry and things like that. But our population is almost 90% pre-trial. There's no incentive, there's no law that would support them being part of these public, what are called public works programs in a jail. So we went and got that law changed. We actually had defense counsel help us because a defense counsel may say, my client has not been found guilty yet. We know they're going to be found guilty. There's a process that they're working out negotiations with the DA's office. During that time, which sometimes takes months, they're not able to earn additional time or even improve their skills by working in laundry, working in the kitchen and do that. So we put in the law that said, amended the law that said they can earn good time even if you're not sentenced. I think this is a tremendous idea. It received nano support in the 130th. It just got missed. It was added in that they can do it. But the part that said that they could earn the good time for it wasn't put into subsection two. So we're going to modify that. And then lastly, probation transfers. Our county jails are flooded with individuals that have been found guilty or are pending violations of probation with no other charges. So if somebody comes to jail and they're in for burglary or a drug charge, they may have gone to prison for three or four years and then they have three or four years of probation. If there's a violation of probation, they're being put into county jails for violations of a state sentence. And they'll sometimes set from 30 days to nine months in a county jail. And when they're finally adjudicated, which often happens, their release time served, all done in the county jail. And for us, while we're boarding people out every single day, these individuals should not be left in county jails. They should be returned to the state prison system. And I'm not talking about individuals. I've already made concession to say if an individual is charged with probation and a new crime, I'm discarding them. If they're charged with a new crime, still feel like that's the county's responsibility. But those that are sitting here because there's a technical violation, failure to report, moved away, failed task, whatever the violations are brought, they shouldn't be left in the county jail. At one point, we had 16 individuals set in our jail waiting on this. There's no burden, there's no drive from the state to help push these cases along. They're just setting it. So we've asked to bring that forward. I would invite each of you, main sheriff's legislative breakfast is January 14th at the Senator Inn in the morning. I'll send over the time, I believe it's seven or seven thirty.
Where is it?
At the Senator Inn. It's been very well attended in the past, all sheriffs. Law enforcement resource sharing, I don't have a lot to report on that. I do have some back and forth dialogue. We had a meeting with Major Hare and Local Lieutenant Johnson. Then we had the meeting in Augusta. I, my commandant staff and I spent some time and sent a proposal to the state. And they sent back our counter. We're kind of going back and forth. It's, they're not backing away to cover less, which is a positive thing for us. But it doesn't look like they're ready to take on more of those areas either. So, but a shift of how the zones look might be beneficial to us. Because right now I feel like we're crisscrossing our county. That's not always as productive. We're trying to line them up so if I could have resources all on one side, then that would change every other week. A lot more to share on that, but I just want to let you know that we are having a dialogue with them.
You working with somebody at the state? You saw you work with Mike Johnson of Agar, who was he working with?
Yes. And that, well, kind of the challenge for us is that as effective as they may be, they're not the decision makers.
Right.
And so we've included, I've asked that, that a major, one of the majors be involved. Major Hare has been the primarily folks that are coming up working with us. It's not just our county, this is several counties doing the same thing.
We had a meeting two weeks ago where they briefed county commissioners and sheriffs on some of the things that they were doing in both the legislative field and professionally. It was, I found it very interesting and helpful that we were in the same room. There was pretty good dialogue there, but we, we need to continue that.
I do feel like our conversations have been good, better as of late. And that's positive. Ultimately, we need to do the right thing.
I'm lateral discussions rather than, you know.
It's difficult. They face staffing issues. They're kind of like I am today and trying to figure out how to address their staffing issues. They have responsibilities across the entire state. They provide specialty services, but so don't we here in the county. So anyhow, those conversations have been good as of late. I just got a quick note I made for myself, reference to Franklin Street project that's down there. As this is going along, it's been going along well. Scott and I have talked a couple of times. We do have to address the parking as we go along. I surmise that a discussion with the city or trying to figure out how to address a couple of parking issues, particularly with our clerical staff, that there might be some areas that we've got to get some designated parking for them. I don't have an answer for it, but I just want to keep that on the plate. So I know you have a connection to the city that might open some doors of, you know, a few spots along Franklin Street that would help us address some temporary parking or whatnot. It's just difficult where it's such an elevated area up here for us, for them to walk from the back to come way down to Franklin Street.
Yeah, I think getting specified designated spots on Franklin Street would be difficult. Isn't the capacity with the city law out back?
Well, that's part of the challenge. So if we have individuals that are handicapped or whatnot, we can't expect them to park in what I always call the back.
I mean, if there's not, if there's not handicap spots on Franklin Street, that's a different issue. But I don't think any spots would be, I mean, I can't speak for the city. I'm just saying, I don't think they'd specify any spots specifically for any, for the sheriff's department, for the county or anything. It's just not typically done.
Your predecessor was much more optimistic once you joined us than we had some sway.
He was foolish.
Next thing I have in front of you, speaking of stats to talk about earlier, I have in front of you some stats from the jail next week or in a couple of weeks. I'll bring you some law enforcement syllable. But this is kind of a snapshot. I think these are important numbers and happy to discuss them within detail in the future if you'd like. But the in-house, these are averages for the year. So the average in-house population for the county jail last year was 156. Our state rated capacity is 157. Our average boarded out is 69. If you see that I put a note on there at $85 a day, that's $2.1 million. Just be aware that as of yesterday or two days ago, that $85 is now $100. There's nothing we can do. The counties are raising, the outside counties that are boarding people are raising those. What I do have concern about sharing these numbers, and we're getting ready to change from our bar system, which is the midnight count statewide for state and county jails, is now called the Jim Systems. I'm not even sure what that stands for yet.
Justice Information Management System.
Something along those lines.
Why I know that, I don't know.
It's, it's the same thing. It's about tracking individuals at night, midnight counts. What I get concerned is when I share these numbers with you of 156 or 69, what it doesn't show, these are averages, what it doesn't show you is how much movement has taken place during the day. So if you looked at our population last night and it was 165 in-house and you looked at it again at midnight tonight and it's 165 in-house, you assume by looking at that, nothing happened. We could move 25 different individuals that day. There's a tremendous amount going on. At the end of the day, it all washed out and the numbers were basically the same. But you could have 15, you know, 12 to 15 people new come in and 12 to 15 people get out. And so there's a tremendous amount of movement. So please don't be fooled by the average daily populations. When you look at the 100, you know, if you add these together and you look at we're in our 240s for a range, know that our population during the day could be 270 or 280 and that it fluctuates that much. And so as we continue to talk about the needs of our facility, there's a difference between long-term and short-term housing within a correctional facility.
Yeah. Sheriff, I do want to point out an area that I may not recognizing another member of the Bagger City Council that has consistently been with us for a while. So we're delighted that two members of the council are getting an indoctrination as to the needs of your department.
Of San.
Mr. Mal, thanks for being with us.
Pretty soon, me and Andrew.
Also, in those numbers, number three, you'll see pre-trial. We're up to 85% of the individuals held at the county jail are pre-trial, meaning they have not been sentenced, have not been found guilty of their charges.
Sheriff, would you say most of those are over 30 days?
Absolutely. So we've done, the court system has done a good job of really focusing. And as you know, it's been several years now. It started, speaking of legislation that came out of our office, about providing every two weeks, a list of individuals to the court to mandate or report who is in our jail. It actually starts instead of their name, it starts with how many days they've been in jail, just to bring light to that. We've gone from the seven to nine, you know, seven to 900 range to five and 600. So they're, they're staying on top of these. I guess some of my frustration is when I look at that list of five and 600 days, those used to be murder, 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 murder charges, which I understand are, some often take longer. Our top 10 are not even for murder. They're complicated drug cases and here's the other challenges. And I hear this from our district attorneys. It's not, it's not just what our district attorney is doing. Many of these individuals have charges in multiple counties, multiple charges. I mean, 10, 12, 15, 20 charges in different counties and here. It's very complicated. And then obviously it is a true fact, we're struggling with defense counsel and not having enough. That's a, that's a real problem, is one that I'm concerned about.
Sheriff, what was the, what was the transition date roughly between the 85 to the $100 charge for boarding? I know this, this here reflects the $85.24.
Yeah, January 1st.
January 1st.
Yes. Yep. And you can see the breakdown, males, females, 70, 30. That's pretty, that's been in play for quite some time, hasn't changed a whole lot. Admissions rate has gone up. So we were down, so we had the peaks years ago of just over 5,000. It actually dropped down into the 2,700, 3,000 range for a while. The last couple of years, you'll see that we're peaking back up over the 4,000, 4,265 last year. I will tell you, this is concerning to me. Law enforcement in this area are summons them a lot. They're, they're doing a really good job not bringing every arrest into the jail. And, and to some point, it's a problem because there are some people that should have been incarcerated that are, they're coming back over and over and over and over again. And so I, this isn't on law enforcement not, not taking additional steps. Matter of fact, I think they're doing, we're probably tooling it, the pendulum probably swung too far. This shows you the complex cases that are people, that are people coming in. The other problem is when you put people out on bail and they violate and violate and violate, that's what's adding these charges up when we're having some people come in for 18 violations. That's a real issue. And at some point, you gotta stop. We can't keep putting people out on bail and watching victims get hurt and people get beat up. And it's a, it's a concern. So, and you can see on there, it's an average of 12 a day. So I did do some ranges for you. In-house population, we went as high as 178 in-house. That's an average. So what I did find, what was our highest all by itself without an average, like at any given point during the day, we were at 196 was our high last year in the facility. Our low of 147 as an average. And then boarded out, average 91 as low as 50.
How can you have 190? You said you were rated for 157? And you said 196, but you said the standards from Department of Corrections, they say you cannot have more than you're rated for. So how is that possible?
That's a good question. Come shut us down, I guess. Come take them. When you call them, they don't want, the state won't take them. They took their, matter of fact, if it was the day that we had 16 or 18 feds here is when I called the commissioner. I said, we're in violation, how about we come get the DOC inmates? Commissioner, at that point, I had six people sentenced to the state prison. So they were sentenced to the state prison. The state, under Commissioner Liberty, back when COVID started, they decided that they were going to schedule when you could bring people to the prison. And it's on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, under a certain period of time that you can bring people in. I don't have a vacancy or no vacancy light on the back of our jail that says you can't bring people in during this time. As a matter of fact, his standard says you can never refuse. But DOC refuses and doesn't allow us to bring them down. So.
They also don't allow inmate transfers on weekends, yeah?
Well, gentlemen, they have staffing issues. I mean.
They're on 24/7 like we do.
Understanding here, but I was being facetious.
Moving along.
I had a question, pre-trial, real quick, Sheriff. Pre-trial, what should that number be? It's been so long that back in the day that I, I don't know what back in the day.
What the percentage is?
What should it be like before?
So if it was 65% pre-trial.
65 would be like considered.
Because that is really the role of the county jail, right? The role of a county jail and why it was even developed was to hold people short-term.
Right.
To make sure that they were not dangerous to the public. So somebody who was out causing a major danger to the public, they just had, speaking of not great situations, correction staff brought to my attention this weekend, we had a person brought in on a warrant for failure to have the appropriate bait while fishing. You know what, this, this is an anomaly. It doesn't happen very often. This is ridiculous. But it was a warrant. And so the police department that brought them in said, this is a court order. This isn't my discretion. A judge said, this is a warrant and I don't have a choice. The person was brought in on a $25 bill. That's an anomaly. That's not what's in the jail. That person was out before we even blinked. But that's part of that turnover during the day. Then our staff still has to process this person. You have to still go through the whole booking process.
I had a question about that. That person probably didn't even counted in the night count, right? They might be up by a minute. Like if Bangor arrests somebody at 6 o'clock on O Y and they get bailed at 10 o'clock, they don't even make the count, right?
That's why I say, please be cautious. And this is part of us making sure that we educate the public about our counts. Because people look at our counts and they'll say, your count has never gone above 240 as a total altogether. But the truth is during the day, we were up 10 or 20, no different than a hospital, right? So, you know, at night their count is this, but if you looked at counted all the people settling in the emergency department all day, that population could be up 20 or 30 more people. And we experienced the same thing. So I think as long as we're educating folks to that and if we keep referring to the emergency department, people do understand how the hospitals were, sometimes that's helpful to us. I've taken way too much of your time, but I think these are important. We can get back into stats another day and talk about more stats if you'd like that. I will be for the law enforcement ones. On the jail medical contract that has expired, we've gone year to year on our medical contract with the jail. And our medical provider has been great. We've had very good service, very responsive. It's working very well. And then I got the increase and it's much more than I thought. So my recommendation is that perhaps we extend it for six months, the contract allows us to. Perhaps we extend it for six months and go up to bid or have a discussion about whether we should go up to bid.
Are there two, is this just, does this include mental health as well?
No, that's separate. Yeah, so our medical, medical provider is providing medical services 24/7 in the jail. And to be quite frank, they've done a really good job. We've had challenges over the year, years. We have a very good provider in place. The one thing that I did ask, Sally Albert is the CEO of the company, if they would entertain taking over our pharmaceutical piece. And so we're one of a few jails that bought pharmaceuticals still separately. And I asked her if she would partner them together. I think it, it puts a little bit more on them to manage the pharmaceutical piece and Billis. So when she provided that, there was actually a little bit of a cost savings on the pharmaceuticals rather than us do it, that they're doing it through her company. So that piece was good, but the overall, and she did, she did share to me, it is cost, the drivers of the cost of nursing. And then we hear about it all the time, that there's a shortage of nurses that she's had to increase pay to keep folks here. She also pointed out something, and I know you're going to think it's just me saying this, but I bring Sally in to say it. She says that our physical plant is a danger to her staff, that it is much more staff intense about how they get around our building to do med services. They've actually had nurses hurt in our, in our physical plant that she's had to put out on, gone out on workers' comp. This has impacted her ability to provide services in the jail and therefore there's a cost. I didn't think it was appropriate to share the numbers because this might end up being an RFP. So perhaps we can talk about that another time.
Fair enough.
Were you looking for approval of a six month? Because it expired, right?
Yeah, so it's expired January, December 31st. We have the clause in there that's allowed us each year to go on. And maybe I shouldn't have taken it for granted, but we've had a great relationship. It's worked, we've had nominal at best increases, which is another kind of the problem is they've not had substantial increases at all. And so I think they have to catch up and it does not include the medical clause.
Does she, to your knowledge, seem receptive to extending six months?
I haven't spoke to her, I'm sure, certain she would. I did tell her that this is the first time, given the percentage, that I would be probably shocked if you can ask us to go up to bid.
So a couple of clarifying questions. One is, is the takeover pharmaceuticals, is that included in the price?
Yes.
So the pharmaceutical is included in the jail medical contract?
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner.
And that pharmaceutical, if I was to separate it, that's not what's caused this. As a matter of fact, it's a little cheaper. Another thing is, it's going to take a tremendous amount of work off my correctional staff managing meds. She did also include like our day-to-day Tylenol, over-the-counter stuff that we are currently paying for. So there is a little savings. And so if we weren't going to do anything, if we did this by yourself, that far makes sense.
Number two is, I'm assuming that the six months moving forward would be at the new rate? Or you may negotiate, be able to negotiate something different? So I think before they vote for the six-month extension, you should at least know the percentage of increase on the contract.
So.
Can we say that for executive session?
I only, I respectfully understand what you're saying, but I feel like in the fairness of an RFP to go up to bid, if we're saying what somebody's price is today, that's not fair. So perhaps in executive session, I could share what the proposed increase is and, and then that way when somebody else is bidding on it, if that makes sense.
You're here for an executive session on a contractual matter, aren't you?
Yes, yep. That's okay.
I just wanted to have a question. So if we went ahead with the six-month extension, it would not include the medication you would say it would be just for a joint hour?
Yeah, I think she would.
Okay.
She wants to do that. If there's, there's a little cost savings, it's not significant, but it's, but it is cost savings. It's more about procedural for them and for us. We're doing, we're counting payments of meds and tracking meds and it's peak, it's a staff time on stuff that really is a medical issue. And so I feel that it would be a more appropriate, and most of the jails are doing that. They have a bigger, they have a bigger dog in the fight when they're paying the bill than us. And then.
So do they dispense them as well daily or we still dispense them?
No, they do that. They dispense them, but we're ordering them, we're paying for them under their direction. It would just make sense that they're doing that themselves. At the same time, we're in a little bit of a dilemma that I probably have to reach out to one of our two hospitals either way, is our current company that provides blood draws refused to accept main care prices anymore. And so they've dropped us. And not only us, they've dropped other nursing homes and other places. So as you know, Mick Combiashner, you may not be quite up to speed on it. So the Medicaid change that says that we will build a bill out for Medicaid in the future is on the horizon, that's great for counties, it's two and three years away. We're in the, the state right now is working aggressively, we've been part of the pilot with the state that's been on South County, because I know how important this is to us, to make that happen. But we're two or three years away from actually seeing those savings. So at some point, this is going to be a good thing for us. Right now, we still incur these medical costs. Yeah. And then just my last thing, as you know, we lost a transport van a few months ago. We really struggled trying to hold on, I've been trying to hold the ground, make you see where we were on our budget. We do have some money that's been escrowed from past years and then what was projected for this year. I'm going to ask that you allow us to go up to bid for a transport van. The, it sounds simple, but it really hasn't been as simple as trying to find an insert. So we had a sole source vendor and I was stunned, the insert was more than the van. And so we've, I'm glad we've waited for a while, we did have a little good luck, but we had the K-9 unit come on and we bought an insert for our K-9. That the vendor who put that in for us, put us onto a different company that does prisoner transport inserts. I got an estimate yesterday, it's half the cost and probably a better insert. So I do feel like we should go up to bid. I know now that there's two on the insert, the van can be a bid for a local, I'm sure there'll be now a local company here in Maine that could actually do that.
Did you thought when we bought the inserts in the past that they would be, you could put them in the new HICM or the new van, did they change?
Yeah, that's dramatically changed. So you, you look at any van today, they're so much different than what you used to be in the highbacks. This makes me nervous about buying inserts, it's no different than the cages and the cruisers. They make them so vehicle-specific and the vans are dramatically changed. I do feel like this is probably the insert for the next, you know, 30 years, because we've gone to this mid-roof level and a high-roof level van. I don't think we should go to the high-roof level, because we still have some jails that we go to that don't have, you know, 12 or 15 foot ceiling type doorways. So, but the, the standard that I've seen for other counties is the mid-roof van that happen to be boards. This insert will fit into those. Allows for a couple of things that I think are very important, it has its own air and heat in the back, that's a problem to some of these, if you just go buy a box van and try to throw an insert, that they don't have the same heat and air. And then also, most importantly to me, to our staff, is that there's video. So just a monitoring, it's obviously not recording, comes with a tremendous cost, but you'd be able to have video monitors in the back. The why, the reason we need the insert is so important is because we transport so much for boarding whatnot, whatnot. To separate male and female inmates, you need to have sections inside the van. So these vans generally only take about nine people. These inserts allow you to put three females or three males up front and the others in the back, and you can kind of co-defendants, all of these different things where we're required to transport. But make sure people are being separated, that saves a lot on our transports.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff. So what we're looking now is a motion for an RFP for transport?
Yes, to go up to bid, not to purchase. Correct. Go up to bid, not to purchase.
And that would be appropriate now?
Yep.
Make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion second regarding a new van for transport for an RFP process. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, is unanimous.
Thank you very much. We'll get the specs to the administrator, county administrator, and we'll get that out. We do have the specs of both the insert and the vehicle. That's all I have, I have some stuff for executive session.
Okay.
Under the contract for a town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry to disappoint.
No, no.
Yeah, we've just got a couple of quick items here and then I think we'll go to executive session. So, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, number one, you received a draft copy of, well, I call it the state of the county report. You got a better title, throw that into it, but if you have any edits or anything that you'd like to see, anything I missed, expanded upon too much, let me know. Maybe on the, at the next meeting, the 21st, kind of finalize that.
I assume.
I'll take another look at it.
Very good. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
You took on that.
Yeah, just started out basically as an update and kind of kept going with it and yeah, I kind of liked it.
Well, it looks like a great piece for public consumption.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. One item that hasn't come up for a while is the opioid committee. I know Commissioner Marshall has, has asked me about it a few times, I have one individual. So for Commissioner Trumbull, this is a committee that we're looking at to put members on in order to start looking at any distribution of the county's opioid funds that it's been receiving.
We've got an individual from each district that we would appoint or we discuss, but if you want to.
Talk about five, was it going to be a five-member committee?
It was, the sheriff was going to be on it as well, I believe, and have some sort of significant input. I believe myself, and then three representatives. It can, it can kind of take shape as you, as you decide, you know, looking upon it, there's nothing really, anything, nothing's etched in stone.
How much do we have right now in opioid funds?
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna, I wouldn't dare say actually.
1.4, am I right there? 1.4?
We've, we've allocated some of those funds, so I think we could get, we could get a report back.
We got a $270,000, didn't we get a $270,000 check last month or two months ago from one of the sources?
Yeah, I, I've got so many numbers right up there, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare.
We'll need to get an, we'll need to get an actual status of the current money there. And then my, my thinking on this is that the state committee, the state approach to this was very cumbersome, to say the least. I think this, we could focus with a smaller committee and focusing on predominantly treatment, education, revenge, and talking to a number of people, community who deal with this. That seems to be the preferred approach that they take. So with that, I, I think I've been ready to go with this committee. I know we've had other things we've had to attend to, but with ARPA being done, budget being completed, the finances, thanks to you, in order now, with the coming of the new year, we need to focus on getting these opioid monies into the hands of those organizations that are dealing with this issue.
Okay.
I would like, before we make our decisions, a list of what the state is allocated to their opioid committee or task force.
Okay. At this point, just looking for names for your own task force. Commissioner Marshall has submitted one, so.
Yep. Okay. I'll try to come up with a name from district. Also, I think, I think that's a good point about where the state spend money, but at the same time, as we, as the committee gets going, I think we could look, if we have big projects, we could look to partner with the city as well, because they've got, the city has our money as well, which they've allocated very, very low of it, so.
Okay.
Okay. Bid opening.
Treadmill bid opening, I believe. We have one bid? And this is one of the treadmills that's being replaced down in the Wellness Center. It is in working condition, safe condition, but also being sold as is, so.
Yep. So we have one bid?
You were the only bid.
One bid?
Congratulations.
The bid is for $200. Do we have a motion regarding?
I sold you one at my house for 150. Oh, it's not, wasn't you?
Who wakes up the bid? Second.
Motion to accept the bid presented for $200, all those in favor, is unanimous. Congratulations, Mary Ann.
All right.
Okay. Property at 127 Hammond Street.
This again is just a kind of a reminder, first of the reminder, I feel we ought to put up at least a sign or something indicating that we're, we're interested in ideas, proposals, have an end date on it. Nothing to be decided today, but if you have some ideas, send them to me and kind of think about it, maybe we can solidify something on the 21st.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a question, I know that had been advertised, is this the first time we've advertised as a vacant lot? It's always, they had the property building on it before?
That's correct, they had the building on it before. Yeah, this is the, this is the first time that we would put something out there with a, with a blank slate.
We've solicited RFPs, we got one.
Right. And I was just saying, I mean, as we move forward, I don't think anything's going to happen quickly, but hopefully, once we get some smaller weather, we can at least get that loomed and seeded over there.
Well, when we, when we crossed, when we proceeded with the demolition, we did it in such a way as to make sure that the property is building suitable as this.
Right.
So that's a big, that's a big selling aspect to this project. So I like the idea of the advertising, the thing on site, but the two-sided, it, I like the cost involved with that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd probably be the reasonable approach at this, at this time, yeah. At least till the spring.
Did you feel we should analyze what grass we plant over there too?
No, the sheriff is familiar with it.
They make a nice star three, I think, you know?
It's all legal now, it's all legal. It's a fundraiser.
Okay, moving on to MCCA Training Day.
Yes, that would be tomorrow, down in Augusta.
Yep.
And it's not just a training day, it's, it's the annual meeting day for, for both organizations, RISBOL and MCCA, so.
Yeah. And as you may remember, we appointed you as a proxy, but there is also a requirement for FOIA training, which you may have concluded.
You got that once, yes.